Did you guys get this by send? I also...
No, my email is screwed up.
I would like to signify the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, amayaguan, in this world with every and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming. It's very nice to see everyone.
Okay. I'm here tonight, I'm gonna pass out the open meeting laws that we just received from the Attorney General's office. And everyone has to sign for this packet and give me back this signed sheets. I have to keep them in my office. If the department has to kindly make copies and give it to every member on your board and have them sign this sheet also, so they can send it back to me. Everybody, all persons serving on a public bodies are required to see one of these. The town clerk shall maintain written certificates. The law requires forty-eight hours, like it always did, excluding Saturdays and Sundays now. If you're gonna have a meeting on Monday night, you'll have to have the meeting into me by Thursday. Meeting notices must include a list of topics that the chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed, and notices must be posted in or on a municipal building to be visible and followed all hours. Emails are expressly included in the definition of deliberation, which is prohibited outside of open session, but use an email for the distribution of agendas, scheduling information, or reports to be discussed on the next meeting is permitted. So, to send all your boards the agenda and things for your meeting, you can do that by email. Attendance by a quorum at a conference, social event, or a meeting of another municipal board, for example, is not a meeting. If there is no intent to conduct business, there is no deliberation with the meeting. In addition to date, place, time, and matters discussed, meeting minutes must include summaries of matters discussed, a list of documents used in all decisions made and votes taken. Documents and other exhibits such as photographs, recordings, or maps used by a public body at an open or executive session shall, along with the minutes, be part of the official record of the session. Chairs will be required to periodically review executive session minutes to determine if they should be released. The purpose for the executive session must be ongoing in order for the minutes to be kept confidential. And that's about the, you know, the eight key provisions of the new law. So you can read, I hope everybody reads what they have and sign if they received it and kind of please give it to their people on their boards and make sure they sign. And I wanna say, if anybody hasn't done the ethics little thing on the computer, please do it, because I have seventy-two people out there that haven't done it. And I've sent letters out, second releases, and I might well have to send out the third notices. So please, if you haven't done it, just do it. It only takes twenty minutes of your time. I know we are busy, but twenty minutes is enough to do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the local school committee regarding wages. And could I please remind everybody that when we speak, if you're speaking in the audience, no one can hear you at home, because the acoustics will not pick it up, could you please put it up here, in that way everybody can hear you?
Would you like us to talk to them?
Please.
I would like to make this statement and express my opinion here. We have representatives of the school committee in our superintendent here to talk about a difficult issue that we're having in terms of budget salaries. So I'm going to just read the statement here. Before we begin our discussion tonight with the school committee, I'd like to express my perspective. These are my views and mine alone, and they may not be the same as my fellow colleagues. As it layers on to the school committee, in the past three years, I've witnessed dedicated, hard-working school committee members wrestle with their ever-strengthened budgets. They have spent hours upon hours to balance pressing needs of students, staff, and faculty at the Norris Elementary School. All the while, school committee members, this is based on my observation, have kept in mind the town's financial difficulties. There was never a time in the budget process where the town's needs and the financial constraints were not taken into account. I would just like us all here tonight to appreciate the challenging decisions that had to be made regarding union and non-union salaries. School committee members were faced with the question of what was equitable in terms of their staff and school faculty salaries. Given the circumstances, I believe the school committee members did what they feel to be most fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening. What happened, is there anybody that's not known about what we're speaking about right now? The board saw it when it had our stuff. Everybody, every entity in the town did not give any raises, because we didn't have the money, and everything was looking more and more dismal than it did with the state and federal government. And if one person died and the other didn't, it would only cause problems and despair, which we didn't want. The school department, the police department, if I'm wrong, anyone, shake a corner. There were two people, I believe, non-union people, raises. And that in turn caused some turmoil with our other non-union people. And the board does not have jurisdiction over how the school spends their money, to my knowledge. However, we had asked to keep peace and harmony within the families, to please not do it. It was done, and they forgot what was said, whatever, and it did cause some problems. And we were just concerned about it, and that's why, that's the reason we would please come to make.
Sure, and thank you for asking us to come tonight, and thank you for your statement. I'm pleased and happy that that's the way you observe it, because that's certainly the way we feel about the way that we built the budget and the way that we work with the town's and the state's money and the town's people's children, right? And we had heard, obviously, in our meetings, that there was some discussion around the budgeting process and non-union wages, and all of us, to be honest with you, were surprised when we thought about, when we think back about how we built the budget, we go back to conversations that we had in March around when we were asked if we would revisit with the unions. And in those discussions, I think it was March 23rd, and you would expect me to be prepared, I guess, so I went back and looked at that. And in those discussions, we talked about that nobody would bear the load that we would, I think it was, we would all take a hit at the same time, something along those lines. In other words, if the unions didn't take the cut, then the non-union, at least that's what I left with, if the unions didn't take the cut, the non-union folks. And revisiting that March 23rd meeting, that was certainly the case. Soon after that, we were asked if we would ask our unions to reopen the negotiation. We did. They came back soon after that, saying that they weren't interested in doing that. I think we informed the Board of Selectmen fairly quickly on that, and weeks later received a letter thanking you for that process. So if we were against the town's strategy from a standpoint of budgeting strategy, it wasn't intentional. And that's, I mean, that's our defense. To the extent that you're looking for a defense, that's what it is. Did we sit and say, "You asked to be corrected"? It's certainly more than two people that are non-union at the school. There are, there's office staff, there's nurse staff, there's custodial staff, and some of those raises and steps that were included in that process.
Cafeteria staff as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't say cafeteria, but cafeteria as well. The total is around thirteen thousand dollars with steps. We feel very comfortable and confident in the way that the school is run, in the way that the finances are managed, and frankly, in what we've asked the town for in the last few years. I mean, we've produced free cash as a department the last two years. Last year, we were level funded. Two years ago, we took, as far as funding from the town, and this is what I've looked at, we took a cut in that, and it was a real cut. It wasn't a cut where the budgets were submitted and then that number was cut. It was, the spending from the previous year was cut in fiscal year '08. And we've been very responsible from the standpoint of being creative in the way that we've gone and found funds to fund the school. We do, we are a school of choice school now, and we do have, the school is attractive, and it's a stable environment now. We've got four classes, and each of the classes that we have, and we have in every year, every summer for the last couple of years, had to go out and say, "Who won't we be able to support next year, and who do we need to give pink slips to"? We've been able to create a level-funded process. We will be returning money to the town this year. We returned ninety thousand dollars to the town last year. We believe that we've been responsible in the way that we have conducted our negotiations, whether that be with unions or with the most recent busking contract. Both of those, in essence, have produced savings. And we're very confident. Very confident that we have had the best interests of the town in mind, and you are correct, and I believe many, many times when we're having discussions, we talk about how it is that the decisions that we make are gonna affect the town, because we're town's people too. We're not just loyal to the school, we're loyal to the town as well. So, having gone back and looked at that March meeting, and then again, looking at the letter that we received from you on, somebody helping with the date, I believe it's May 10th.
May 10th.
If I look back at that today and knew that the intention of that letter was to tell us to zero-fund non-union employees, I can see how it can be interpreted that way. But, and we all asked each other, none of us, including what I got to, was, as a town, we're gonna go back and ask the unions to open our contracts, and then we'll work towards that zero percent, and we had already done that. So, in my mind at least, and I would say as a body, we haven't voted to say that that's what we thought then, but it never came up, that we shouldn't have been, that we shouldn't have been funding the way that we did. We got level funding from the town last year, we made it work within our budget, we're aggressive in going out and finding grants, and that's how we brought technology into the school. We're aggressive, the PTO has become more aggressive in their fundraising, they raised money last year for teachers to go to training events. We're very comfortable and confident in the way that we've managed the town's money and in the way that we produced last year's budget. So I'll take a breath. Thank you.
I think there's a definite misunderstanding, because it was my impression from those meetings, that if the unions didn't take or reopen the negotiations, then it was to be furloughs or layoffs to make up the difference. And non-union, it was just simply no raises. For if the department, we did have some meetings with individual department heads who decided rather than no raises, they would be furloughs and layoffs instead. I don't, I'm troubled by the fact that there's an allegation of misunderstanding, because I thought we were as clear as we could be. And again, we don't have the authority to tell you how to spend your money, and let's be clear, the statute is, we appropriate a line item, you spend it as you see fit. We have the right to, not the right, but we can ask for some, make recommendations on how you spend it.
Understood.
And our recommendation was that wage lines were gonna be funded at the same number as last year, which meant no raises. If the unions chose to ignore us as far as reopening negotiations, then it was furloughs and layoffs.
I think you might...
That was my understanding.
I think you might wanna revisit that March meeting, and that was the last communication, direct communication anyway, that I've had. And if there are other direct communications that have been ignored, I'd be very interested to know what those are.
Well, we have a letter.
Yeah.
It's not your... We have a letter, and we sent May 10th.
I trust that in my comments. I mean, that's, I would ask you to appreciate where, the point of view from another side of that letter.
Our problem is now that we have maybe ten, fifteen non-union employees getting raises, where every other non-union person in the town is not getting a raise.
I understand.
The equity's there, and there are some of them are sitting in the audience here tonight, saying, "Okay, now what happens to us"?
Statement was, and stand by, I mean, and heard you last week, it's a slap in the face to you. I think that's the way it was raised.
Well, I think, we don't have the legal authority to tell you how you're spending money. I suggest that we have some moral authority to suggest to you how we'd like you to spend it.
I think the board, the school committee acted as morally as anyone could have acted in this regard.
I'm not saying "inward", I'm just saying, we as a board have, don't have the legal authority to tell you how to spend your money. We have some authority to say, "This is how we'd like you to spend it".
And I'm telling you, and I'll tell you again, that if we didn't, that if we didn't execute the strategy that this board had asked to be executed, it wasn't intentional. It wasn't intentional.
And we go to the next level, is how do we fix it?
I agree.
Getting beyond the fact that it's done, how do we fix it?
I agree. And we have said, and have said in the past, and I think the folks on finance will back us up, that we've said we've got some ideas for how it is as a town, we might wanna look at things. And if you remember that March 23rd meeting, that's what we left the room saying, "When we get done with the budget, let's get in a room and start talking about creating policies and procedures, so that we maybe start building savings over time".
I'm gonna say, how do we fix the fact that your employees got raises and everyone else didn't? How do we fix that problem? Not the policies in the future. We have an immediate problem. We've given it directed to everyone else, no raises. How do we fix the inequity that has now occurred?
You've asked the question. I mean, you can't ask a question without the suggestion of how to do it.
I don't have an answer.
Okay. Well, then you might not expect one from me, then, right?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I mean, this is it. We now have an equity that's been created. How do we correct it? I mean, and the numbers I got emailed today, if we implemented all of the raises, what was the number?
Fifty-five. Fifty-five, that's...
Fifty-five, additional thousand.
Right.
And this budget is now thirty thousand dollars out of whack already.
Approximately.
So we would put ourselves eighty, ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's more than that actually, because on the cherry sheet number, the final cherry sheet number we got first, was school sending tuition for choice was double what the original cherry sheets were, so we lost another fifty thousand.
So if you grant the raises to everyone in town, you'd be now a hundred and twenty...
A hundred, about a hundred.
Hundred something thousand in the rep.
Okay. If you're gonna speak, please come up to the microphone.
Certainly, if you have to. Thank you for recognizing my question. We've been brought up to date on raises for union and non-union school employees. I would like the selectmen to inform the people that are here, as well as the voters at home, what is the status of union and non-union contracts for other departments over which the Board of Selectmen do have a leadership role and do have authority.
Before we go on that, let's let Mr. McDougall give his opinion, if he has one, in regard to this situation.
Okay, I'll wait. I'm gonna keep my question.
You know, it was, I felt it was sort of a slap in the face, and maybe it was miscommunication, but one individual did get a six percent raise, which everyone knows. So that sort of doesn't help when we're working into more budgetary cuts coming up this fall. We're talking four percent at least coming out of the state. My concern is the overwealth of the town, the health of the town. And we talk about efficiencies and trying to save money and being efficient, regionalization and all of that, and we try to do as much as we can with what we have as selectmen to really deal with. And it's, out of the thirteen, fourteen million dollar budget, we're down to about two and a half or three million dollars that we can actually really sort of control. A lot of it's in contracts, two-thirds is the schools. And if we're looking very closely at efficiency and cost-saving, we have to look at the lion's share of the total budget. And I know you guys get an audit every year, the regional, we don't get a copy of that.
Make sure that you do.
I mean, it's little things like that, and it's, if you're talking about trying to save a hundred thousand dollars, it's a lot easier to save a hundred thousand dollars than eight million dollars than two to three million dollars. And I've only been a selectman since 2004, and it's always been, when I talk to department heads here, there's always felt it's the town against the school, which is kinda crazy, but that's how it's felt. So, you know, I keep trying to move the town forward in a positive direction, but it's hard to do that when this happened. And I think Mike's question is how you move forward from this, is the question, how do we move forward, knowing there's gonna be more budget cuts coming up, and that's gonna affect everybody in town? And the bottom line is, as a selectman, my agenda is to protect the things that are most important to all of us. That's our family. And that's EMS, that's fire, that's police. Those are the basic things I don't wanna see cut. I hate to lose a life, because we don't have a patrolman on, or we don't have a firefighter available. I'd hate to see that happen. That's where I'm from. And I'd like to see where the schools can say, you know, getting the audit would be the first step, and seeing, just seeing what's going on, and keeping us in a loop to what the finances are, especially at the regional, because it's kind of withdrawn from our day-to-day stuff here. But just making sure we can all move forward together as a town after this.
And I think we have consistently said that we would like to be involved in the conversations that talk about how we establish policies and the way that we manage money in town. And we realize that, as a significant percentage of the budget, it's our responsibility, and we've never shied from doing that, and in fact, feel like we're ready to contribute ideas, but let's have the conversation. We said that in March, we said when the budget was done, did reach out to the finance committee, and it sounds like, with finance talking to Chairman Dodd, that there may be a meeting coming true in the next month or so, but...
But we were talking as we were going through the finance, you were there for some of them, as we were developing the budget last year, where there were key points, where saying, you know, "We should have a policy for this, or a policy for that, for guidance".
I agree.
And the policy can change as the politics change, but there should be some basic guidelines, like, "Don't balance the budget on the free cash". I mean, that was like one of the first things we tried to initiate, and that's Mike's idea.
And this is the conversation we had in March, and we're having it again in September, and I'm fired up, let's go. Let's have, we talked in March about not being able to have that kind of conversation sixty days before a budget's due.
Yeah.
Let's make sure that we do it as we're moving into a budget cycle, and now we're a month into a year. So, a month into the new year, or two months into the new year, let's have it.
I think we shouldn't lose track of the fact that this was inadvertent, that there might have been a miscommunication from what we wanted to convey and what the school committee heard. Is that... That just wasn't...
I'm taking, I'm picking up quotes from the meeting that I watched last week that says, "It was a slap in the face." Well, if I slap somebody in the face, I wanna know I'm doing it, and I'm gonna plan on doing it. I don't, if it's unintentional, I'd hate to have that slap helping us.
So that really takes, you have to take a different tone.
I know, but I just, just...
Because they are, this wasn't a going against the town, this apparently wasn't miscommunication, so...
If the thought is that there was a discussion in the school committee around, "We are in defiance of what the Board of Selectmen wants us to do, but let's do it anyway", that discussion never happened.
But there's, but there has been things that have happened in the past.
I'd like to...
Town hall, annual town meeting where an override, ninety thousand dollar override came up from the floor for the school, and you know the override's not gonna pass, and that ninety thousand dollars had to come out of the town's budget. It's that kind of attitude.
Is that the discord between the town and the school? Because I, you talk about historical perspective, I was...
I'm just saying that from my own experience.
I was on the finance committee from two thousand or so, and...
Okay, one order, we're talking about wages, we don't wanna be going...
No, we're talking about moving forward though. I really wanna move forward with a discussion like this, I think it's a healthy discussion.
We are in a holiday too, and you got a lot of people here tonight, so you can't go really in brick, yeah.
Finally, I'd say, let's have the meeting.
When I posed the question, "What do we do to fix the problem?", I was talking about to the select board, do we, one, give everybody in town raises? Do we allow the status quo to exist, that the school department got in raises, and no one else gets raises? Or do we somehow rescind the raises, or ask them to rescind the raises? Those are, those are the alternatives that I see to this problem. And answer one puts us a hundred thousand dollars in the hole. Answer two and three leaves us, or two leaves us still thirty thousand dollars in the hole. I, when I'm talking about solving the problem, we have a disparity that's been created. Now, how are we gonna either fix the disparity, or make it an institutional disparity, that we decide that's the way it's gonna be? That's what I meant by, how do we fix the problem?
Yep, I understand. And I'd add a fourth to that perhaps, and perhaps that's where we were headed, is how do we work together between now and the next budget cycle, so that we, so that we either make that correction?
I'm getting questions from town employees who wanna know the here and now, as we all do. They're worried about the dollar in their wallet today. So, that's my question to the select board, for the debate that we have to have when this is all said and done.
What's the total, though? If we were to try, try to make a fair, we could, like you said, a hundred thousand dollars?
Where's the hundred gonna come from?
Well, I think this calls for a meeting with the finance committee, so that we know what the numbers are, and we know what we're talking about. We're not gonna make any decision...
They're not, they're not mystery numbers. If the calculation's right, the numbers are known, it's an easy number to come up with. But in the answer, I think we got Barbara's question that's still waiting on the floor.
Yes, yes. That's the here and then the here and now.
Can I just make a statement?
Could you come up, Ellen?
One of my, when the P27 is also...
You gotta come up, too.
When you mentioned there was no raises, it was at a department head meeting, and we were all here, and we were no raises. So I don't know how they didn't hear about it, because it was at a department head meeting, and it was all departments here, and you said no raises, and we all went to no raises. We gave none of the employees raises. So it was that, I don't know how you got not heard about it, but that's when it was, at a department head meeting.
Thank you, Ellen. James over there?
Specifically on the wages, I have two questions. The first being, you said that there was only two people who got raises, and I'd like to specifically know what the true number is, how many people did get raises? The second part of that question is, was there anybody at the school that did not get a raise?
I can tell you...
The school department can only answer that.
And I have to, I'll have, to get the number, get the stat, we'll go back and get the number, certainly that can be detailed. I can tell you...
This is the number here.
I want to just the salary line.
Yeah, he asked, he asked how many people.
Well, this is in the dollar.
I told you the dollar is...
Well, this is in...
No, let me just get...
I think this meeting was well-planned in advance. I think... I think that we should have been prepared to be able to answer simple questions such as that.
Can I get back to my simple question? And I'm going to pose, pose that to the selectmen once again. You are in charge of a number of contracts with individuals as well as unions. It is my understanding that you negotiate contracts with the town administrator, the highway department personnel, the police department personnel. I would like to know, have these departments gotten any raises through your negotiations? You're the lead for the town of Southampton, and have you given, have you in your negotiations given raises, perhaps a one-year contract or a three-year contract that have included raises and/or other incentives?
The answer to the question is Diana signed the contract extension with no raises. I don't remember how...
Well, I signed one with a raise, but then I gave one raise back.
Well, you gave, gave a raise back, correct. She had a raise, she lost her raise, as part of our budgetary no-raise policy.
Okay, how about, how about the others?
Police contract is still open, and I can't comment on whether there's a raise in there or not, but just assume from the climate that we've expressed what the raise might be, if there would to be one in there.
Okay, does that also include step increases? Now, there are two ways that...
There are two ways they get raises.
Yes, is one is a percentage cost of living, the other is a stepping...
I believe my philosophy was, no raise. I think I was the one who led the charge and made the words, as plain as could be, when I leaned forward in this room and said, "I don't want to hear administrators getting raises when employees got nothing."
Okay.
So, to my knowledge, every administrator in this room that's here now did not take a raise this year. The highway contract, they said no, and they...
They said no?
No reopening of the contract.
Okay.
And they are, they are living within their budget line from last year. Who else do we have for contracts?
Do you have...
That's it.
Those are the only, the only increases were to the highway department.
They got their raise, because they...
They got the raise, but the level, but we level funded the...
So, there'll be furloughs for that, for that department? At some, at some point, there'll be furloughs.
Furloughs and layoffs or something. They, they have the same wage line that they had the year before.
Okay, but they traditionally exceed the appropriation. It gets buried in, at the end of the year, drawn, drawn from other departments.
But they only get financed 40 weeks.
What you're referring to is, is winter roads. I assume. Emergency funding. He, I guess I have to be clear, what we were talking about was the regular yearly appropriation, non-winter roads, because if you want to make that decision, then maybe February or March will stop flowing roads, but I don't think that's gonna happen. If it's light winter, then we'll be okay. If it's heavier than the normal winter, there probably will be an emergency spending. Their regular union contract, their regular wage line was level funded.
Both wage lines.
Both wage lines, but winter roads is an open issue.
But to clarify, we only finance the highway department 42 weeks.
Yes, but there's funding from other sources.
I'm just saying for 42 weeks.
Their, their wage line from the town is the same as it was last year.
And for years and years and years going back, from when I was...
But I cannot believe the highway, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but as far as I know, the highway superintendent did not get a raise, the chief did not get a raise, the fire chief did not get a raise, the fire chief doesn't have a contract, I don't think yet, but he's probably looking, negotiations-wise, it's the same as the police contract, but, no, the entity of your question is, no.
And one of the things we've been trying to do, Michael, is to get all the contracts on the same year. It'd be burdensome, but it'd be like the same year, so that we get the...
It doesn't beat off of each other. If you give 1% to someone, they, that's the starting point for the next union contract. What we'd like to have is everybody on the same, on the same page, so they're not bidding off with one another.
This unfortunately has been an ongoing problem.
Correct.
And I think it's partly because we haven't had a clear direction, the leadership hasn't been clear, and Personnel Policies and Procedures Board has not upgraded wage scales and some of those other things in a consistent manner for a number of years.
Here we go again, Barbara, we did upgrade the wage scale.
I think we're...
You don't agree with the way we upgraded, but we upgraded.
Point of order, I think we're just getting off into a...
So, anyway, you've answered my questions, I thank you much.
Yep.
But I think it's very important for the leadership of our community to be transparent to the voters, to the committee members, to other people who work on budgets.
I hope we weren't too transparent.
Or telephons.
I hope we were transparent.
I hope so. Now, I have another question, and it's, it's something that I find troubling, and that is, there is, available to anyone who has town access to the town's website.
Can I make a point of order?
Very personal information.
Point of order, at this point in time, we're gonna deal with, I would like to deal with the wage issue to bring that up later on.
I think we brought it up later. Thank you.
Another time this evening?
In the evening, yes.
Okay, I'll be here.
Well, I raised another issue, though, with the, with the meeting law, it's not...
Barbara, what you've gotta do on this, you've gotta mention it, and then it'll go on the next meeting.
This is such an emergency, it is such a dire problem for the town that's being vulnerable for a public display of personal information, banking, bank routes.
Barbara, that's enough. That's enough, Barbara.
A lot of...
That's enough, Barbara.
It doesn't belong to other people.
It's enough, it's not inflammatory stuff, Barbara, thank you.
Well, if you don't address it when you first care about it, it has to come out.
Thank you, Barbara.
If, if I may, I would like to remind the Board of Selectmen that all school administrators have taken, have given back, are either taking five-day furloughs, have taken zero increases, or are giving back financial assistance in their contracts that was there for professional development.
I appreciate that, thank you.
We commend you on the job you've done. We are not terribly...
I, I understand, but I think it's important that that be heard, that your principals are giving back, as are your central office staff.
And what do we do with the situation we have? Do you take back the raises? What do we do? We're in a terrible, terrible position. We have people here that deserve raises that didn't get them. What do we do with this, sir?
I think that Mr. Phelan has proposed three alternatives, and I think Jack Fitzpatrick has offered another one, and I think that correctly, Mr. Phelan said it's the Board of Selectmen's decision to make which route to take.
It was one of the hardest decisions I had, or hardest votes I had to take that night, not to give the town employees a raise, just to let you know that. I'd be inclined to ask that, send a letter to the school to ask to rescind the raises, in all fairness.
Just for a clear, point of clarification, when we talk about misunderstanding, the letter that we did receive from the board, from the select board, mentioned the associations, and that was, that was done in good faith before we had, we actually received the letter from the board. Mr. Schott and I had written a letter to the association, the association had declined to reopen the contract, and then we got the letter from the board. So, I, I want to go back to say how hard the school committee has worked to operate in good faith and to be good citizens of this town.
But that would be my answer for the situation at hand at this time.
I don't think anybody's felt that everybody's trying to operate in good faith, but taxes, we're in the, I, I only see the three or four alternatives.
Can I make a statement? Unfortunately, I don't think the town can legally take back raises unless it's voluntary, that's coming from Department of Labor. So, if they were gonna take back the raises, it has to be on a voluntary basis, because you've already paid off what the raises were. If you hadn't given it to them already, then you can rescind it, but unless you voluntarily take it back, they voluntarily take it back, or whatever, you cannot take it away. But I would double-check with the Department of Labor, but that's what I was told.
And I'm just gonna ask, Chrissy, who told her, what statute?
Department of Labor.
But who?
Mr. Mark Andexler, he's one of the head, head personnel. I can give you his number tomorrow.
Why don't we check that, and then pursue it from there? Is that reasonable?
But there are alternatives, so I think it's gonna be...
Well, I welcome all the alternatives.
I'm just trying to save the town from legal...
No, I understand, correct.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I appreciate that. You know, and that would make it another red one, the whole process.
And it was, it was with that in mind that I, not that I knew the law, I'm not saying that I did, but the, but the fourth, the suggestion I added to this was that we work together in preparation for next year's budget, and we, and we find a way to make it right, or make it right then, or, or at least we work together towards how it is that we arrive at this situation.
It's much like we have a mistake rate. Everybody makes mistakes around the dings, the two wrongs don't make a right, and we're very concerned about the people, the other people that deserve raises.
I understand that.
Diana, would you please check that out, and we can go from there. Does that sound reasonable, everybody?
Well, Diane said she had some alternatives.
Look at alternatives, is to discuss the options besides having employees take back the raises, which means go, perhaps going forward, admitting that they know we have planned this, this budget cycle, and move forward with everybody on the same page. I think, I think it would be making a better mistake to ask employees to take back the raise, and I would be hoping for that.
But isn't that, but isn't that the way of saying, saying, and that alternative and then the other two alternatives, give everybody a raise or give no one a raise?
Well, probably next year, trying to make good on raises when we have the supplies, when we're in the conusions, you know, to make whatever we can do to make it improve the salary levels. It doesn't help the people that didn't get raises, to take back the school raises, they're still in the same situation, right?
Oh, they're...
I mean, they're, they're...
They're, they're, they're still in the same financial situation, but they're in the same financial situation to all the employees, but there may be, Chrissy may have pointed out an, an issue that needs to be dealt with, and may make one alternative less obvious.
Okay, we, just to keep the meeting going along, because we don't want to stay on this forever, should we have Diana check to see if there is such a statute? And she can report back to us, so we can go from there. That's gonna tell us which way to go, if any.
Well, naturally, I guess now sitting here, there's another alternative, is they keep their raises, but they, they, they take a furlough or something. That would be up to the school department, I'm just saying that's another alternative, if you can't take the money back, is a, but I, I'm not, I'm not advocating any policy, I'm just putting it out.
Whatever the, whatever the...
And, and it's up to them, you, you guys can totally ignore us anyway. We're not, we're on the journey.
And you can say that, but I, I hope you don't leave the room tonight thinking that we did.
No, I understand. But, but you...
No, I under, I thoroughly understand having been on both sides of it.
But you can rest assured that we will not...
But I went to the school committee looking for that pot of money, it doesn't exist, and looking for that discord between them and the town, and I didn't expect to find it and didn't find it. So, I'm looking, you know, if there's examples, I look forward to them, I didn't hear any tonight.
Are there examples of what?
You, you talked about that, that's a problem between the town and the school, I'd like...
Well, I listened, I, I talked to the department heads, and I talked to people with more historical knowledge or less budgets in the past, and, you know, I think, you know, if Colley was here, he'd be able to bring in some of that information, talking about how town hall employees had given up raises in the past, were promised, they never got those raises. I mean, some of those things have happened before, it's not, it's not, it's not like it's the first time. And I'm just trying to make things move forward in a healthy fashion, some sort of healing, because the economy's not turning around as fast as we'd like.
Let's call that meeting, because we talked about it in March, we're talking about it again today, let's, let's, let's get around the table and talk about, and talk about those policies that might allow us to not have to have this conversation again.
Sounds good.
Well, which means, we, are we, but still brings us, what are we doing tonight? Are we gonna continue this to another meeting? Are we gonna make some, some talk tonight, or are we done, what are we doing?
Should we see what Diana gets for an answer?
I mean, that, that's the obvious, but are we putting it on another meeting?
I want to ask you some clarifying questions, too, before you go, so. Are you asking for the money to be, I think there's, administratively, it's gonna be a nightmare logistically to take the money back, regardless of whether it's allowed or not. Are you talking about just reducing going forward? That'd be something, it'd be, I mean, you're not talking about going back and taking, getting the money back from these people, paying back to Medicare, paying back to retirement.
Practical terms is not gonna help, though.
So, realistically, I think that we should, we should focus on another option.
So, we should just have another meeting with finance and these folks?
Well, I still think we have to resolve amongst ourselves, do we wish to go forward with raises for the rest of the town, or do we not wish to go forward with raises for the rest of the town? That's the first question.
I think we should wait until we have a full component of our committee, and then a call for a meeting with finance committee, and put our heads together and not make decisions like this moment since we're at...
You're still gonna be left trying to find $100,000 with the finance committee sitting here.
Right, but I remember what it was like to be making $18,000 a year, working in the mailroom, and how much that raise meant to me, and, and how much the raise means to all the other town people, especially these days. And, you know, I wish there was enough money. I just wish we had another revenue source, I wish the state and the feds hadn't cut $300,000 out of our budget.
And the feds may not be the end of it.
And it's not the end of it, I wish, I wish I could give the raises that are appropriate. I just don't know where we're gonna find the money.
Or are you saying, or suggesting, expressing the opinion that we maintain the status quo?
I'm just expressing my frustration as a selectman of not being able to do what I'd like to do, because there's no funding source.
I think Chief is up to the front, and we can make comments before we...
Yes, sir. Yes, I, I also just, like you automatically saying, and I find it hard to believe that the message was not put out very clearly. We've been dealing with shortfalls, and the knowledge of shortfalls coming for the entire year, long before the budgets were ever decided upon. I think that the, that was also well-known long before July 1st, when those non-union employees at the school did get the raises, in spite of the board's efforts to not have people get raises. This whole issue, as, as well-known, has caused a lot of problems, a lot of distension with all the employees that work for the town. But in light of that, I would like the board, as a department head and a taxpayer, I would, as a department, let me say it this way, as a department, I expect that the board would next year, since there's not much that can be done this year on this, but next year, that the board take a very close look at the local budget, and the money that comes in with the school choice, that gives them this flexibility to have monies to put around to what they decide they want to do, in this case, raises perhaps. But as a, as a taxpayer, when I see the disparity that's going on between the departments, as a taxpayer, I demand that the board closely examine the local budget next year.
Chief, you're asking us to do something, we can give them a budget and so on and so forth, but they can do basically what they want to do. We don't have to...
Agreed, agreed, that's exactly my point. The budget's been assessed this year, next year, you can look at it, and you can give your local input with authority as to how much of a local appropriation we go to the local budget. If, as I believe the number that the principal had stated was somewhere just short of a half million dollars of school choice money coming in for next year was anticipated, that's an awful lot of discretionary money to be able to spend on budget. This year, we've seen a lot of capital items, myself included, my department, that didn't get funded, but yet we used capital money to buy these boards, these smart boards. Could not that have been a better spending of the school choice money to buy the smart boards through that, and then therefore leave some surplus money here for some of the other local departments? And I think that you have that authority and that right to look at that appropriation when it comes up, and maybe budget the local school a little bit less, and have them spend their discretionary money on things that would cost and come off the backs of the rest of us. That's my point.
Thank you very much, sir.
And we're interested in not letting this linger any further. I think that the choices have gotten, we would, gotten down to a precious few, and I would move the board that we maintain the status quo, no raises to the rest of the town employees, and go from there.
That's a motion, sir?
That's a motion.
Is there a second, Mr. McDougal?
All right, that's a second.
Because I don't know where we find the money if we have...
I just, you know, again, I talk about, you know, the balance of raising a child, and it scares the hell out of me when heroin is five dollars a bag, and it's so pure that you can snort it. And we have kids getting home at 2:30, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, some of them unsupervised. I think there's a... some of them unsupervised. I think there's a missed, whole missed opportunity or misdirection for the school. I think smart boards are a great idea, perhaps, although I've yet to see one be used. I think a better idea is to keep our children engaged. And afternoon buses is something I've been pushing for since 2004, keeping the kids longer school hours, keeping them engaged, and, you know, trying to nurture them, you know, in other ways. And I, as a physician, I just see these things. I have patients who are crack users. I had, you know, these are things I've seen. One of my patients overdosed in a women's room at the city hall, and I was pleading with her two weeks prior, she got to get into therapy. She died in the women's room.
Dave, you've got to move along with this one.
But what I'm trying to say is that you've got to look at the whole thing. And when we look at the school, and we talk about spending on the school, and we always bring up that number, where we are in the state, you've really got to look at, you know, is it the best solution to throw more money at a child, or is it to throw more love and interaction with that child? I think there's a difference there. And I think we can't fix some things with just by throwing more money at the kids. That's all I'm going to say.
Is there a motion out of the floor? Is there a second anywhere?
I said, I said, there's a second, but... Do we maintain the status quo, let it change the school, the school employees or where they are and the rest of the town employees, or no raise?
Now, we're not going after a discussion, but for what we need?
No, I think we've got to put this thing to bed.
Yeah. And then the only other thing I would add to here is, Mike, if there was more money to come available?
Yeah. Well, we've had this discussion with other department heads. If there's free cash or other money that comes in, or a windfall, that we will look to those items, and the hope would be we would restore some weight to them. But I don't want to make that promise.
Okay.
Because we don't know where we're going. But I, I think we've got to end this. I mean, we've got a situation that was created. We've got to just go on.
Any other discussion, leadership? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So you'll be able to get those audits?
Oh.
Yes.
And does that audit include the local as well as the regional?
I know the regional was done this year. I'm not sure with the last local audit. I'll check with Cindy.
If we get copies of those, that'd be great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very, very much for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
You are doing an excellent job, as is everybody here. Everybody's parts in the right direction. Sometimes we make mistakes, and look where we are because of that.
Sure. And we look forward to working, working with you and with the finance committee, and hopefully during budget season next year, we're talking about disciplines that we're putting in order in. And we believe we have an open budget process as well, so we welcome you to come and audit those meetings and see that it isn't what you might think it is.
Part of the intention of this meeting tonight, the request to your committee, was we wanted to bring this whole thing out in open, and we knew it would turn very ugly. However, we want everybody to see, please don't do this, because look what it causes to the town, look at the hardship and look at the heartache. You know, let's please try not to do this again. Thank you very much. Do you have anything else, Bob?
No, I don't think it's a big question. The budget process is open.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks.
All boards, committees, and departments, updates?
Do you just want to go around the room?
Chief, do we have?
Yes. We've recently had a turnover in some of the part-time staff, both in dispatch and in the police department. And I just want to let the board know that as a result of that, I expect the overtime costs to go up, covering shifts, to engage more raises.
You're talking about overtime costs for patrols as well as...
Patrols and dispatch.
Seating and budget items, though?
Well, I think that goes without saying.
Thanks for putting us on the notice.
How much ballpark?
Well, it'll depend on, and see how, you know, I mean, the trouble is with both police positions and dispatch positions, is you just can't pluck somebody off the street and put them, you know, in a position. It requires typically around 240 hours of training for the dispatchers, and three times that amount for police officers before you can have an officer out by themselves working. So it's, it's quite expensive.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other boards and committees? Sir?
Barbara Floyd, Cemetery Commission. We're going to have our annual hydrangea approval meeting, so nobody needs to get upset, because they'll go down to nothing, and it'll blossom bigger and larger every year. We're buying back some cemetery lots, so we have more availability. We didn't expect that. We're revising the plan in the back of the cemetery to maximize the number of grave sites we can include there. We're looking into discussion of a cremation urn wall to save space, and we haven't talked about the economy on that yet. A lot of the historic headstones are leaning over. It takes money, it takes funding. We're looking into applying for grants to write them up, and also to, the three of us to pitch in. We asked the town officially to have all invoices from all contractors, including the highway department, for the wonderful job they do of cutting the lawns, but we need to see all the invoices. Then we'll approve them as need be. We can't be responsible for our budget if we don't see the invoices. So for some reason, we've been bypassed the last half year or something. And that's it. Thank you.
May I ask you something?
Yep.
A lot of people...
Want to buy a plot?
Oh, I'm drinking a bottle.
Thanks, puts you on the list.
How much is the plot now?
$4.50.
$4.50 for one. Okay, good.
Yes.
And do you have to pay? You're only fee on it?
No.
A lot of people ask me these questions.
Yeah, we're, we're, I'm coming up, which is why it's taking so long, coming up with a question and answer form that we can keep at the library, that all the cemetery commissioners can have, and, you know, we can pass it to whoever wants one. So I've got a desk just set up for cemetery paperwork, and I'm going through the old minutes, through the years, to answer questions like that.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Hank Barton, Housing Authority, representing the Housing Authority. Hank, step up to the microphone. The people at home would love to hear you.
A lot of them.
It's being recorded, it's not going out live.
Housing Authority, as most of you know, had recently completed, or had Pioneer Valley Planning Commission staff completed, a housing assessment and housing needs assessment and action plan, which we are starting to work on. We are meeting with other boards. That plan has been approved by the select board, or I should say, accepted by the select board. And I'll ask the planning board chair if they have had a chance to vote on it yet.
We actually have, at our last meeting.
Okay. I hope you approved it.
We did.
Okay. That means that the PVPC staffer who is working on this will be able to file it with the state as officially approved plan for the town, which will, in the short run, give us some protection from a developer coming in, looking for a comprehensive permit overriding locals zoning. And we are, on the authority, beginning to talk with Habitat for Humanity, I think I mentioned that last time that we had an all-boards meeting. And we hope to have one of their representatives here at a select board meeting in the near future. The other thing, which is really not a Housing Authority business, but is relevant to housing, many of you know that PVPC succeeded in getting, getting a grant with Southampton as the lead community for three or four towns in the area for housing rehab money. And as a consequence, we're getting seven units, or seven houses units, rehabbed in Southampton as our share of that grant. Don't ask me about the procedures. The chap at PVPC who is in charge of this told me he already has a stack of applications, and I assume many of them are from Southampton. So that should help us improve the housing stock. And it's a, it's a pretty good deal, because you have to show the need, and if you get the grants alone in effect, but a large part of it can be forgiven over time. So I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Hank, while you're there, Master Plan Committee, can you switch hats to the Master Plan?
Well, the Master Plan Committee, of which I'm chair, suspended operations for the summer, while the PVPC staff, who we've engaged to work with us, has been working on a couple of chapters on that plan. And we will meet again here Thursday, September 23rd, to, I guess, resume active committee activity, where we will see what they have done over the summer and review it, and in the long run or short run, suggest, probably suggest some changes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the committee?
Sir? Are you a fire trucker, is that right? Some pictures in here, if you want.
Sure.
And we've been in the process of taking equipment off of our '72 Maxim that we are taking out of service. It's going to be a revert, a reserve bumper. And we've equipped the truck. The truck is actually in service right now. Again, one time we had a discussion about buying equipment for it, and I understand we have no money. But you have a, there's going to be part of the meeting tonight where we have a couple of surplus vehicles that we actually put out to bid, and I think you're going to be looking at it. If you accept a bid, it's about $1,000 there. I don't know that you can directly apply that to buying or to any purchase of any equipment on the truck, but that going into the general fund, I'm asking if there's any money that we can have. I've already had to order two new nozzles for this truck, because with all the equipment we have, the nozzles that we, the old nozzles we have, we can't use them on the truck, because they get stuck in the hose bed when we try to pull them out. So I did order two new ones, and just the two nozzles are going to cost me about $1,000 right now in my expense account, because we just don't have any money to buy the equipment. We've started pressure testing our hose, our annual hose task. We've already had about 3,000, 4,000 feet of hose that's all junk, it's out of service. So we're getting down to the bare necessities here. So if there's anything or any way that we can get a couple thousand dollars to offset, because this is all coming out of my expense account right now. So my expense account fairly made it last year. And again, I don't expect things are going to get cheaper this year, so we're going to be, you know, at least a couple thousand dollars more in trouble by the end of the year.
What is your expense account usually get used for?
My expense account is used for fuel, for heat, electricity for my buildings, for any repairs on the vehicles. It does everything.
Well, if we have an emergency repair on the vehicle, we could probably go back to finance for a transfer on that basis.
If there were emergency repairs, but, you know, this, this is basically equipment.
No, I meant, you know...
Yeah. And I did last year, but it wasn't enough money, so they told me to take it out of my expense account. I think one of the trucks, I had to put all my tires on, and that cost me about $1,100, $1,200. And they said, just take it out of your expense account.
Is the truck inoperable without the equipment?
Pardon?
Is the truck inoperable without the equipment?
It would be if we didn't have anything. That's why I ordered these nozzles, because there's, there's a front line. If you've got a $265,000 truck and you can't, can't spray water, it's worthless. But we have nozzles on them right now. We just work around the problem that getting them out of the hose bed, we have to set up differently so we can get them out. But the new nozzles won't get tangled up in there.
Okay. How do we cover any getting $1,000 for this nozzle?
That's a good question.
What happens?
Just a place that is back there.
Oh, I was going to suggest you put it on your follow-up meeting if you're serious, if you're seriously asking. That's how you'd have to do it, have to put it on the town.
I'll need it.
Unless it's an emergency or unforeseen.
To the extent you go to a fire and we can't put water on it.
I think that'll be an emergency.
It's an emergency. If it's my house, it'll be an emergency.
No comment.
No comment about my house.
No comment about whether it's an emergency.
How do we, if the truck simply isn't working?
Well, it is. I mean, I guess from the chief's videos, it's not the best circumstance.
Right. It's, I called the company, to ask them, it's, it's a, it's a brand-new truck, and it has new technology. The hoses that the nozzles we had on there are pistol grip type hoses, are nozzled. And these are designed for non-pistol grip nozzles, so that when you push your hose lay-in, everything slides out. So there's not enough room in there. If the nozzle turns, it gets caught in there. And so we have to put in, we've got some real old ones that we put in there now that will work, but I ordered the other ones, they should be on with it next week.
Well, it's got money, it's an expensive, expensive one. Can't we just see how things play out through the next three or four months?
I guess that's the best way to spend it out, and then deal with the issue for the fall.
Yeah, just, just to let you know, we're, we're already there, spending this kind of money on it. So as the year goes on, we still have all the other expenses. But the truck, you got some pictures in it. Stop by and take a look at it. Dave stopped it and looked at it, and he thought...
How do you get the driver to...
I was just going to say, you always have to drive it a little over.
That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Reenie Groden from the Board of Health. I just wanted to say a few things. The work of the Board of Health goes on. There's a lot of ongoing work that happens in the summertime. It seems to be more activities because of the nicer weather, but there's ongoing restaurant inspections and also re-inspections, animal control issues on a regular basis. Septic obviously is, picks up in the summertime. There's a lot of upgrades. There's also a lot of new construction, as you can see from around town. There are ongoing disease reporting requirements. There's also a lot going on right now with the upcoming flu season around the plans for seasonal flu, and also H1N1. And Josh Matthews, our health agent, is also involved with a lot of other coalitions around the state, and also the tobacco coalition. And that involves following up with some of the tobacco inspections that are done in terms of selling cigarettes to minors, that sort of thing, and all the other discussions around allowable and online nicotine and all that sort of thing. So that's pretty much it. I just want to make two comments about the budget. The two employees of the Board of Health are negatively impacted by the lack of a raise, and I certainly want to go on record of saying that. And the other thing I just wanted to say is that Josh Matthews' position as a health agent involves getting out into the community and going to all the restaurants twice a year to do an inspection. It involves going out and doing perk tests, septic inspections, going to different meetings and so forth. So his job involves being out into the community, responding to animal issues and so forth. So he gives us a very detailed log of his activities, and so he's very accountable to the Board of Health, and that's the way the reporting structure is set up. So I just wanted to go on record as saying that he's accountable to us, and we think he's doing a great job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other committees? Mr. Senator?
I just want to make sure people understand that once a year, there is an opening meeting which we report to the community, and we receive projects from the community that fall into our three areas. That meeting is going to take place October 14th, and so if your board, committee, whatever, has a project that falls into one of our three categories, which is the housing, and there are some funds there, historical preservation, open space recreation, get your project written up and come on the 14th and present it to us. Now, this year's projects have been pretty well completed, you might say. It's kind of nice to say that we've already got a clean slate. It's possible that we do need to speak with the selectmen about one possible situation. But if you're looking for, you've got a project that fits, and you're saying, oh, no funding, we're the ones to come and see.
Mrs. Ahearn?
Yeah.
The Johnson property, where are we with that, behind cemetery?
It's been all plotted out for, it's my understanding that they have a way in, and the design has been done. I mean, that's been done for several years, so that the cemetery could, commission could actually begin to look at. They're talking about the cremation wall, and that is in the plans that were presented by the company that was hired.
Okay. So where are we moving with that? Is that, as I know, space is a premium there in cemetery. Is, are we moving forward with that, or...
No need to move forward with it. Right now, we're looking at the option of it, but right now, we still have vacancies and existing center, the cemetery.
They might want to think about...
We are.
Cremation wall sometimes...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sander, should we talk about the grant that we give the assessors office and kind of, now at this time?
I don't think so.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
It's pretty clear-cut, and it should be just taken care of and done.
Okay, thank you.
And done.
Okay.
We do need to talk about the, we funded an appraisal of some property, and we need to meet with you on that.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Blanchett?
My name's Bob Blanchett. I'm from the Finance Committee. We spent most of our last few meetings talking about policies. That's already been mentioned in context with talking to the school department and how we could benefit a lot as a town if we, as the boards that are involved in building the budget, could work a little bit toward making the goals of the town a little clearer. I say goals instead of policies because a lot of them are not attainable in the near future. And yet, I think it'd be really good if we knew what we were striving for as a town to try to get the situation of the town's finances and its budget in a better shape than it's in right now. I don't think it's the fault of the town at all that we're struggling. We all know that it's the state funding that's gone down and down and down, and may, again, go down even during this fiscal year. We don't even know if we're done with the cuts yet. And we've already got, as was mentioned earlier, several categories of deficits that we haven't been able to address for the current fiscal year. So that's one of our primary concerns that's immediate. We've got to end this year with a balanced budget. We've got to find the funding sources that will make up for some of the deficits that we're faced with right now, because we already have some. And I'm sure we'll do that, but I'm also sure that this will be even more difficult year than it was the year before, and than it was the year before that. And we're all hoping to see an end to the cuts and get to a point where we could start thinking that the future might be a little bit better in terms of some of the funding sources we've got. But I do think the policy meeting would be useful. I think one of the policies that we really haven't talked much about yet, but I think we need more boards together to do it, especially Board of Selectmen, is the building of the budget. It could be perhaps set up in a way that's different than it is right now. I think the current setup is pretty good, but we saw a problem that was addressed earlier tonight that we'd love to avoid in the future because of all the angst that it causes when things like that are misunderstood, aren't done the way the boards expected them to be done, for whatever reason. So I think there are some solutions to that. I also think that the boards are anxious to have that kind of discussion and want to put these goals together. As far as the current situation is concerned, we don't have free cash certified, but we've already spent over $200,000 in free cash to fund the FY11 budget. So the idea that we would actually perhaps have to put even more of the free cash when it gets certified this fall toward the current year budget, instead of saving it for next year's budget, is disconcerting, and yet it may be a requirement. Several years ago, three years ago, we built the budget as a town, I say "we," the various boards involved at the time, and used anticipated free cash, the stuff that gets certified in the fall, to balance the budget. It's a poor way to run your town, but it was the only choice the town had. Two years ago, we did that again, except that we were hoping, planning to use less of the free cash that would be certified in the future to balance the budget. This past year, FY10, we didn't have to do that at all. The certified free cash sat and was used primarily for the current year's budget, which is a much better situation. In FY11, I don't know, yeah. I think it looks a little bit bleak at the moment, but I do think we'll solve the problems. I don't expect them to be insurmountable, but they do pose problems for FY12, which is very, a lot of unknowns there. And just one comment about the earlier discussion with the schools. For whatever reason that these raises were given, I sort of look at it this way. The board, the select board, in my recollection, was trying extremely hard to protect the jobs of all the people who worked for the town. The idea that people would get laid off seemed far worse than the idea that someone would retain their job but wouldn't get a raise. The efforts were made to try to put a balanced budget together, and no raises were given because that was the main goal. As we move forward, I look at the school committee now possibly faced with a situation where, having given the raises, it'll be perhaps more difficult in the next year to maintain that level because they've already granted them, whereas the town has not granted them. So there's, you know, there's, if you're looking for a penalty that has to be paid, I do think that the school committee finds themselves in a situation going forward where they're going to have to figure that out. We didn't do it as a town because we were trying to protect positions, but I know that every board involved in the budget wants to be able to give raises again to the hard-working people of the town. Personally, I'm glad that they're all still employed, because I do think there's a lot to be said just for that success, and that was a success for FY11, and we'll hope to be able to continue that in FY12. Is there a Finance Committee question?
Where's all the money?
It's dwindling. And I commend the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee over a whole bunch of years for having been able to keep, you know, services reasonably level in this town. But I know that listening to the fire chief just make his presentation, if Ed Colley is, will be here, or were here, he'd tell you about all the roads that really need addressing, and there's a lot of maintenance that has had to be deferred, but you know that you pay the price for that in the long run. You can't keep deferring it. But we have been forced to do that as a town, and that's probably my biggest concern in addition to obviously wanting to protect the jobs of the people in town, because we don't have excess staff in our town. The people who are working have to work extremely hard because the town keeps growing, but the staff levels don't. And expense budgets actually are going down, and eventually, that's not going to work. So what the long-term solution is, I'm hoping that these policy discussions we're going to have shortly are going to address those, because we don't want to keep secrets from the town about the budget. We're hanging together still, but it's, you know, the future's not rosy. And I don't know where the money is.
Thanks, Bob. Is there any other committees? Yes.
My name's Mark Reed from the Park Commission. I just wanted to update the board on a couple of the projects that the Park Commission's been working on. One is, we have a small recreational park at the end of Palm River Metal Road Extension in Helen Drive, thanks to the CPA money that funded the construction of the park and the Highway Department, who's been working very hard at completing the project. It is almost completed, and I would invite all the town residents, as well as the Select Board, to go up there and look at it. It is gorgeous. It's done a great job, and we thank you very much for his efforts and his employees. Relative to Conant Park, unfortunately, this year, our rentals for the pavilion have been down. And I think, again, it's because of the economy. People aren't renting the pavilion as much as they did in the past years, and that's one source of revenue that the Park Commission has to do some projects. And unfortunately, that is down this year. So if anyone would like to rent the pavilion, I encourage you to. It is a small piece, $100?
How much is it?
Oh, I would say probably about 25% at least for that rentals. So that in past years, we've gotten over $1,000 in funding coming in, and this year, you know, we'll be lucky to have $800 for their policy. The Commission is looking at upgrading the play equipment at Conant Park. We realize that that equipment is very old, and a lot of the swing apparatus and other equipment is in dire need of replacing, so that we're looking at next year's project, and we may look back to CPA for some funding in the future to upgrade the play equipment at the park. Through some of the process that the town has gone through, one of the comments was that the park really should be used more and more, and that's one of the goals of the Commission is to try to get people to use it more than just playing ball, whether it be baseball, soccer, some touch football. You know, the park is there to use, and it's a beautiful place to use.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Regarding to Conant Park, several people have asked me why we don't have skating rent there in the winter.
I believe, and Ed Colley probably would be the better one to speak on this, because I think that he was filling that area and to freeze it, is, one, is the time and effort that it did cost the town to do that, and the other issue, I think, is the liability of somebody getting hurt out there. For that reason, that it's been down.
So that's the reason, the way to ice it, you know, put the water on the whole block, and also the liability of somebody that.
I believe so, but I don't, I honestly know all the reasons for that.
Yeah. We could ask him perhaps.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mark, I have a quick question regarding the backstop.
Yes.
Are there plans to repair that, or what's the story with the backstop?
Yes, we've looked at the backstop to increase the height of it, as well as adding some improvements to the existing back basketball court and hoops that are out there, and get some higher fencing, so that if you're using the backstop, right now, people are saying one of the reasons they don't use it is because the ball just goes into the woods, or down into the gully, or they can't find it. So we're looking at extending the height of it, fence, and we'll be talking to Ed about that.
How much does it cost for that in general?
We haven't gotten that far, and we need to talk to Ed about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Another question.
Step up to the microphone, please, if you would.
My question for the Parks Department is, would they rent the pavilion more often if the cost was less? $100 is an awful lot of money, say, for a family gathering. There's a lot of people in town that would like to use it occasionally, but $100 is just too much to come up with.
We'll have to discuss that at our next meeting. I'll do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Mark? Thank you very much for all the reference. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
Is there any other questions?
I'm Scott Furman with the Planning Board. Basically, we've had a pretty mild summer. We haven't had a lot of projects going forward with us, a couple formas, no real big things to review. Even though we've had a minor workload coming in for that, we've only missed one meeting we've had canceled because we really had nothing on the agenda, but there's really nothing more to report. We've got a few zoning ordinances that we're working on for the building inspector, but other than that, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? No?
I just want to address the finance and the selectmen that about my voting booths. Nobody seems to like them. They're beautiful.
I like them.
I like them.
And I might have to get new ones. I don't know where the voting's going to be. I'm going to have voting here September 14th and also November 2nd. I will stay here for the voting if we're moved over to the other place. My only other alternative is getting new voting booths, self-standing, and they're around 250 each, and I will need 30 of them. So that'll probably be around $7,000 with the tax and everything. And I don't know where we will have voting. There was no, nothing in the new school. Elderly don't want us there. We had a meeting last week on Thursday, and they suggested I go to the school, and I said I would have to talk to the selectmen first.
Well, ma'am, we're supposed to be going to the school. To my knowledge, I'm 16.
Yes, I'm going to be there also.
But the building relates, and the council agent's not going to tell us we're not to use that. We're controlling that for selectmen.
I did tell them that it wasn't their say, it was the Board of Selectmen's say, because they're the custodians of all these buildings. And they had said that it took a long time for them to get out of the cellar, and they didn't want their place ruined.
Wait, what about the kitchen? Did they say anything about the kitchen?
I told them they could make a soup for the town hall employees every day if they wanted. In the winter, we'd buy soup from them. But anyway, this is a serious matter.
But, Eileen, we do have some time, though. We have some time.
We have another meeting scheduled.
When's the next election after November 2nd?
May.
So we have.
Unless you people have two and a half or something. But I mean, this, you know, we say we have a lot of time, but I want to know where we're going to be set up. I want to be.
Eileen, what's your timeframe to notifying where the, when we move a voting place? I'm sure there's some paperwork that has to go into it. What's your timeframe to notifying the state authorities?
Well.
So starting with May and working backwards to where we need to be, the decision will be made long before then, but so we know what our target is.
I would say at least two months.
So that.
March, April.
February, March. We should set a goal of November, March 1st, that this issue is resolved and your voting is installed.
And another thing is, if you want to have, like, this year, we don't have to have two precincts, but we're going to be over 6,000 people maybe next year with all the building. And after 6,000 people, you have to have two precincts.
You have to have two precincts. Is it 6,000 voters or 6,000 people?
6,000 people. And we could have two precincts in one place. Yeah. They do that. They have five precincts in one gym or wherever at the school. But to have that, you have to have double the workers, double everything, okay? Can't just have everybody. You have to double everything, double machines. I would have to get another voting machine. This one would have to get another one. But you're going to have to start thinking about that in the future, and.
So we have to go 6,000 people. Do we have to have that in place?
Well, I asked the Secretary of State's Office, one of their workers, and he said that, you know, it was up to the board, how many, the only time we have a lot of voters, presidential election, 85 to 90% come out. We handled it all right, 2008.
And what's the consequence if we don't set up a second?
There's none.
How many people turned out for the last election, approximately? What was the turnout?
This, the presidential?
No, this last election.
May, probably 1,000 people.
So, Eileen, I thought we had a pretty good meeting last September or the last week.
Yeah, we did. We did.
And there were a number of suggestions that came out, and one that the council agent might be able to live with is if we had mobile, collapsible, collapsible.
Yep. That's what these will be, collapsed.
That's a, yeah. That's a.
Well, that's one thing. There's also the possibility of some handy carpeted person taking these and reconfiguring our old booths.
I've got a hammer for you.
Yep, well, you can do it.
That wasn't how it was expressed.
There was also space, and the selectmen was pointing out that there is space in the council agent, but there's also space, our space, the center space. So, as well as.
Well, the meeting room next to my office, there isn't enough room for 30.
We're going over there.
There's a number of things.
With the building.
But we have time, Eileen. We have time. We'll work this out. We'll get to it.
I'm just giving you a heads up, what you're going to have to buy, and how much money you're going to have to come up with. Because in 2012, I won't be around for the next presidential election. I'll be retiring.
You can't.
Yeah. Yeah. And the next town clerk that comes in, I'll be willing to work that election for her, checking in or something to help her out, because it's a big election and there's a lot to do for a presidential, and it's an awful year to leave somebody just coming in on a presidential election. So whoever runs, I'll tell them I will be more than happy to come in and help. So whoever runs, I'll tell them I will be more than happy to come in and help them out on that.
Thank you, that's great of you.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I wouldn't wanna be left like that myself because, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm on the Building Reuse Committee, and we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the Larrabee School has gone very, very well, we're very proud of that, we're well within the budget, so on and so forth, we're so very indebted to Mr. Colley and his entire crew. He's doing an awful lot of work there in regard to the grounds, the water pipe and so on, on the exterior of the building, and so on and so forth. Although, we have one little dilemma that the Building Reuse Committee asked me to share with the Select Board, and that is, the project is coming to an end, we're hoping to be in by October or so. It hasn't been formalized yet, but at the end, when they turn over the building, the different trades have got to show a building custodian or a person to represent the town how to take care of all the systems in there. We have a lot of automated systems and that sort of thing, and every trade's gonna give a seminar, get some other followers to our representatives. So the Building Reuse Committee thought it was in the best interest of the town for the Select Board to ask the North School if we could borrow two of their custodians because that's what they do. And that way, they could be familiar with the Larrabee School mechanical systems and so on and so forth.
Would it make more sense to have the highway guys do that?
Well, I go back to the DPW's concept.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna go from Highway Department to Department of Public Works, it seems like...
Yeah, we could do anything. This is something that's gotta be brought up.
Well, just when you're, you know, I know Joe Muse enjoys working, but I don't know if Joe Muse will wanna pick up that kind of technical, yeah. I think it would be something pushed towards a highway guy that might then become a DPW guy in the future that would be appropriate.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know how the school wants to say something.
Yeah, no, that question was posed to us, and we did discuss it as a board, and Mr. Collins, I believe, already told whoever was it asking.
I have, what I did was I gave him a preview of color tracks. That way, when I did this, and he did respond, yes, we could borrow two of his people that are familiar with building automation systems, they would stay over there, of course. But they would have a working knowledge of what's going on here.
I don't think, I think it's a good idea to have some cross-strained people.
We saw it as, we would be a secondary solution, it may be a transition from a person that's there now, so you have some institutional historical knowledge from when the training occurred with people that should know how to get that training.
I think, I think it's a good idea to have the school hand somebody from Highway, whoever it is, cross.
And we asked Mr. Collins that if the resource commitment becomes something that seems unreasonable, then let's talk about it again, otherwise, let's support it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so what I'm getting is, do I have a motion to have one representative from the Highway Department and one representative from the school?
Or how many are deemed necessary? The more, I suppose, from Highway that we can get trained in it...
Yeah, I would just say representative.
Whatever Ed decides, it'll be him and somebody else.
Someone.
You know, whoever, the more people that get trained over there, the better.
Okay, so we could take one, what, do you wanna take one or two from North?
Let's find out what it is that people are being trained on, match that with the expertise of the people that might be trained, and then say who needs to be where, when.
Just on the automated system, like heating and ventilating and that sort of thing?
Sure, sure.
Chaos systems, in general, maintenance things that custodian would not do.
Yeah.
Okay, this would be a very skilled custodian.
Yeah, systems people, and Mr. Collins can help you with it.
Okay, good. So we'll approach some of that.
Yeah.
We need a motion on that?
I will throw a simple motion.
Good, thank you. Is there any other committees? Okay, thank you very, very much for coming, I appreciate it very much. Everyone does. Let's take our comments right now.
I don't see a chance to go over there.
Diane, all these bills with the storm damage, which line does that come out?
Oh, that's coming out of Tree Ward. He got money from the Finance Committee at the end of the year. Because there's other ones, too, and that's one, so he's got a couple. He got a bunch, and I think he got... This one here, too. No, that's like, that's this one bill, right? And then there's another bill, so he's got... One is his, one is his regular expenses probably for the year. Okay, I'm just curious what the consequences are. Yeah, he did go to Finance and get emergency money after that storm. Okay, okay, thank you. So is the audio being recorded?
Oh, yeah, I got a perfect DVD deck, it'll be online tomorrow.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm gonna talk right after.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm gonna go to my last home, I'm sorry.
Good to you.
Yeah, I've been out there working on that. Before we got out the mission report.
People need to be reliable.
I didn't want to, you can say it now. That, I mean, no one said anything to me about that obstacle today.
I was supposed to say it was after...
Soon as I was told, he needed it.
I was supposed to say it soon today. My friend's father, my daughter, he said it was bad.
So telling Jeff, when I'm trying to get a test site, but they call, and I'm just like, oh, that's a beautiful guy, which doesn't afford it.
Like, the dollars to make sure those little things weren't moved out there, so he was fine.
I actually was wanting to fly, but he drove the car, and it was driving, and the girls come up, and I got...
I think it's like, maybe it's not a very...
I was checking, I was checking for my...
Yes, we have, we have, we have, we have.
Yes, 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 we have.
Last week, I was on vacation, I was flat on my back for three days because I traveled both first and second.
You never traveled again?
Yeah.
You see the waters going bad, really bad.
You know, my legs are...
I'm watching a 3D, I'm rushing back.
I'm trying to catch that, because I'm looking to that, I wanna call.
Yeah, I'm putting it scan, but I can't see anymore.
Sir.
Five dollars, nine cents.
Now, maybe the walls, I haven't checked.
Yeah.
Very good.
Very good.
Very good.
Very good.
Very good.